Yeah, you shouldn't have been here just yet.
Madam Mayor, we're now live.
Thank you.
We have two minutes.
One minute?
One minute. That's interesting. Previous comment. That was. Let's still apply official. Just ask the councillors if they wish to. Any apologies that anyone is aware of? If they're not. Aware of, an apology.
Sorry, it's 5:31.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, my apologies, we were on mute. Welcome everyone, welcome to the special council meeting today. You have your agenda with you, I'll start with the first item. Acknowledgement, we the Greater Shepparton City Council begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land, which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item two is privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. Councillors, are there any apologies today? None?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure the councillor somewhere is an apology or not. But the fact that she's not here, I'll put an apology.
She has just joined us.
Yes, she has.
Has just joined us. Thank you. Okay, so we have a full call, no apologies today. Item number four, declarations of conflict of interest. Councillors, is there any declaration of conflict of interest today with respect to the agenda items? None? Before we move on to item 5.1, I just want to remind everyone that this special council meeting is for the hearing of submissions, budget submissions. Every presenter is allocated five minutes, only five minutes, there's not, there's not any extension of time that is allowed. A bell will ring at four minutes. Also during the hearing, councillors won't be asking questions, however, they can seek clarification about any of the presentations. And of course, yeah, so that's, those are the few points I wanted to remind you about. I quickly, just for a minute, I need to seek some clarification. Do you want to coordinate with this? This is. Right, councillors, we have on page number two, item 5.1, draft budget 2020, 2021, hearing of section two to three submissions. There are three recommendations, we'll start with first. Is councillor Hazelman, do you have got a question?
No, Madam Mayor, I'm quite happy to move the recommendation that standing orders be suspended to allow submissions to be heard.
Thank you, you were too quick, I was getting to read this one first, but that's fine, thank you. Do we have a second? Councillor Patterson? Thank you. We'll now go to the vote, those in favour? Motion carried and opposed. Thank you. We'll now start our hearing of the presentation from submitters. So our first presenter is Mr Rod Schubert, representing Shepparton Food Share. And we'll now admit Mr Rod Schubert in our Zoom meeting, well actually he's already there in Bourbon Room. Okay. Mr Schubert, you can start your presentation and you have five minutes and as I've said earlier, there'll be a bell at four minutes, so please start.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you very much to councillors for giving me the opportunity to speak and present Food Share's requirements to you. Since 2012, Shepparton Food Share has distributed more than 2.6 million kilograms of food to people in need at an estimated benefit to our community of more than $6 million. 300,000 kilograms of food is distributed to registered emergency relief agencies, schools, community meals programmes and churches annually. Food Share is the only local rescue, food rescue agency in our region. With the equivalent of just one full-time staff member, Food Share is able to deliver this critical service. We request additional council support. We thank council for its initial $30,000 support of Shepparton Food Share, however, due to an unforeseen increase in operational costs, we request that council give consideration to contributing an extra $20,000, bringing council's contribution for this year to a total of $50,000. Normally it costs Food Share around $125,000 annually to operate, we expect in the next 12 months we'll require up to $200,000 to operate. Why support us? We receive absolutely zero state or federal government support. And due to COVID-19 since March, Shepparton Food Share has incurred approximately $25,000 in additional operating expenses and we expect in the next six months a further $40,000, $45,000 will be required. The additional costs we incurred are as follows, additional fuel service costs for the Food Share van, due to less food being made available, we have had and need to do many additional trips equating to an average of an extra $200 per week being spent on fuel. For example, we go to Monongatta to collect eggs each fortnight, we have additional trips to supermarkets and food collection boxes, we do many trips outside the region to Melbourne to collect food from Oz Harvest and we also have collected dunas, we do trips to Kiabram to collect pasta and to other food shares in Bendigo and Wodonga to do food shops, food swaps. We have technology, capital and equipment costs that are ever increasing as we need to upgrade our computer systems to cope with increased demand, NBN needs to be connected to cope with increased demand and security, we need larger freezer capacity, we need more food trolleys and a forklift is required. We have incurred additional staff costs due to the longer daily hours and the introduction of two-day shifts due to COVID-19 social distancing. We have also increased staff costs due to having to extend our operational hours from four days to five days. And we've had to change the way we distribute due to our reduced food supply and food rescues and donations decreased by around 80%, resulting in the need to spend $12,000 to date to purchase necessary food staples, something Food Share has never had to do before. We had to change the way we distribute food and we now distribute food via food boxes. Initially, some boxes were donated, now Food Share has had to spend two and a half thousand on boxes due to the demand for our service and is expected the cost for food boxes over the next four to six months will be around $15,000. We've had to focus on additional cleaning and purchase additional personal protective equipment. The purchase of additional cleaning and personal protective equipment has been essential to ensure there is no outbreak of COVID-19 at our service. We've had to purchase face masks, disposal gloves and sanitizers at a premium price as it was earlier. We've had to purchase individual PPE for van drivers, we've had to purchase additional mops, buckets, cleaning supplies due to the additional cleaning procedures that were required. We are expecting an increase in utility costs due to our additional operating hours, so we expect electricity and water usage to increase. We've got a requirement to increase our security. Food Share's location is isolated and is not visible to the general public. Further, COVID-19 has resulted in an increase in food insecurity, meaning there are just a lot more individuals dropping by to see if they can access food directly, which in itself presents safety concerns. Therefore, the safety of our staff, we are in the process of installing a security system and some alarms, I'd expect it will cost round about $6,000 to $7,000.
Mr Schubert, your five minutes have finished, so that was your allocated time, thank you very much.
Thank you. I did not, I did not hear the bell, Mayor, so that's okay.
All right, no, thanks for letting me know, I think, yeah, the bell, all right. In our next presentations, perhaps I should be saying it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for. So our next presenter is Mr Paul Union.
I think we can bring it just until I acknowledge it.
So Mr Paul Union?
That's not, that's a cleaning lady. Pulls in here and he's coming through the door shortly.
So be with us for a couple of minutes while we arrange and prepare the room for our next presenter.
It's Paul. Right.
Unmuted, Mr Union? Hello, welcome, Mr Paul Union, you are representing Kaila Park Recreation Reserve today, please start your presentation, I just want to remind you that you have five minutes and a bell will ring at four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Seema. I have two points to raise in this particular submission in regards to lighting costs levied by council on sporting clubs that use lighting in the Shepparton region. Point one, increase this year and last year per lux, lux, L-U-X being a light emissions measurement, how much light a sporting ground uses, the current charge is 20 cents per lux, per hour. Proposed this year to move to 25 cents per lux. Last year, the lux increased from 15 cents to 20 cents, which is a 33% increase, council budget papers only noted a 25% increase last year. This year, the increase is proposed to be 25%, again, council papers only note 20%. That is therefore a 58% increase on sporting clubs in just two years. All training by majority of winter sports is done after 5:30pm at night, in winter this means using lights, this 58% increase is a huge in a normal year, let alone during COVID. There was no advice of the increase last year of the 33% or this year in regard to the 25% proposed. All bookings are usually required in advance, so in January or February, and so it's very hard for clubs to budget when there's an increase of 25% and there's no consultation, no process in place. One, two or three percent would be not as hard to swallow with no consultation, I request council and councillors consider deferring any lux and all sporting club charges increased this season, push back for two years before then consulting with user groups if the increase is greater than 4%. I wish to raise, point two, I wish to raise what I see as an ongoing inequity in regard to methodology of charging for lux. When an AFL ground with six light poles is charged at the same rate as a smaller ground with four light poles, both delivering 100 lux, how can the rates still be the same when there's far less power being used by the smaller ground? Whilst not fully sure what this means, hockey and netball appear to be charged at a similar rate, but this is an assumption as there's no charges for lights for hockey and netball on councils' fees and charges. I believe Deacon Reserve may be using old halogen style lights whereas Kaila Park is using the new LEDs, this also has a far greater cost in the old halogen being LED being one fifth the cost to use versus the old technology, yet the rates are exactly the same. There's less maintenance on the LEDs, so I'm just not sure how council can A, put the prices up, but then justify such variances in the pricing for different grounds and different sized grounds. Thank you for that submission.
Thank you. Okay, so.
Second submission.
So now you start your second submission, which is on behalf of various local sports, sports bodies, please start.
Thank you, Mayor Seema. My second submission, I'm bringing to council as President of Kaila Park Recreation Reserve, but also Jamie Macri, the Regional Development Office of the Golden Murray AFL and Peter Foot who sits on the AFL board. A short period of time, 10, 12 days ago, we reached out to many local sporting clubs, volunteer sporting clubs in the Shepparton region for support for this particular submission. COVID-19 has obviously had a massive effect on sporting clubs, we haven't been able to take the field, take the pitch, take the courts since March 16 and that is just starting to be relaxed now, there are clubs starting to train this week, which is fantastic. This has brought a lack of community engagement for all winter sports, not being able to get together, it's had a massive financial effect, sponsors are understandably wary about spending additional money as well. And this is wreaking havoc among the volunteers who are the ones that have to raise the money and also support the clubs. My request to council, which is detailed in this very comprehensive submission, is having council include as part of phase two of council's COVID response, and forgive me for being presumptive that there will be a phase two, that if there is a phase two, that under community of the current four response target areas, that winter fees for all sporting clubs, be it bowls, croquet, basketball, be it tennis, be it soccer, AFL, be it hockey, be it netball, be waived for the winter season, the full winter season, which would include pre-season, the normal season and postseason. This is quite an extensive ask of council, but bearing in mind, from March 16, all fields, all community spaces have been closed, so that loss has already been incurred by council up and, and council has graciously offered to not charge until the 30th of June. Some seasons will be extended, some will be run on a shorter basis and if we take into account netball Shepparton, they've cancelled their season, Kiabram District Football League, which includes teams like Ardmona, have cancelled their season. This is a terrific thing for these sports clubs. This submission is again presented by Jamie Macri from AFL Golden Murray, Peter Foot, Chairman of AFL Golden Murray and myself, President of the Kaila Park Rec Reserve Committee, on behalf of what is a very extensive list of support, we have state bodies from basketball, AFL and Football Victoria who have supported this submission, we have local associations in Shepparton Basketball, Golden Valley Hockey and Shep Netball Association have supported along with many clubs who have put their name to this submission. I have conservatively estimated that I have over 6,000 people represented based in the Shepparton area, seniors, juniors, men, women, boys, girls of all ages being supported by this submission. It only, I don't have more names than we could possibly get up to eight or nine thousand people on our list, but this was pulled together in eight days to try and make the council's submission, so our councillors have some idea of what this may have on the budget impact. I cannot calculate that, but what I can say, council, not through my submission, council's already graciously allowed from the 16th of March to the 30th of June, we're looking for that to be preceded and extended and that is the request.
One minute to go, just one minute left.
Thank you, I'm done, thank you for listening.
All right, thank you so much, thank you for your submission and thank you for presenting those submissions today. Yeah, that's it, thank you. Questions? Hey.
Sally Fitzgerald.
So next is Miss Sally Fitzgerald, representing landowners Adams Archer and Hooper Road, Kaila. Good evening.
Good evening.
Sally Fitzgerald.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for being here, you are representing landowners Adams Archer and Hooper Road, Kaila and you are here to make a presentation on your submission. You have five minutes and at four minutes, a bell will ring and I'll let you know, but that's about it, so five minutes for your presentation and councillors are, yeah, and councillors are not going to ask any question, but they might seek any clarification from you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the submission regarding the land bordered by the Broken River, Archer Road, River Road and Doyle's Road. I'm passionate about this land because I've lived there for over 40 years, as have many of my neighbours. We have been in discussion with previous council about the best outcome for this land for many years and feel now is the right time, the best time for the council to investigate future development for the reasons listed in our submission. The land would satisfy the council's future needs for land and housing, recreation for the Greater Shepparton City. My neighbours and myself have enjoyed living in this area, the well-cared-for land offers future residents an opportunity to grow their own fruit and vegetables in good soil, there is enough land to offer a diversity of block sizes for those who may wish to work from home in the future and we feel that would be an advantage. With some positive investigation already carried out by the council through the C195, the land is ready for consideration. We invite any councillors to come out and have a look at this area, I'm sure you would then agree with us, the land is worth some further investigation and future investment. Any funds invested in this area by the council would be recouped through the future, through the developments contribution fund, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you don't, nobody has a question there or clarification? Okay, thank you very much, Miss Sally Fitzgerald, for your time today, thank you.
Wrong one now. Zoom from here on in.
Yeah. Can we start straight away, do we have someone in the waiting room?
David Huxtable.
Okay. Good evening, Mr David Huxtable, you are representing Basketball Victoria Country.
That's correct.
You have five minutes for your presentation and a bell will ring at four minutes, so please carry on and councillors might seek any clarification with regards to your presentation, but they will not be asked any questions as such.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and councillors and also to CEO Peter Harerton staff and I congratulate you on your leadership during this difficult time. I note council's immediate community economic response and acknowledge the previous speaker in this regard and I thank you for that. Unfortunately for indoor sports, due to the restrictions, this will be of little assistance through our, through our reactivation of basketball. My name is David Huxtable, GM of Basketball Victoria Country and I work closely with the Greater Shepparton Basketball Association. Councillors will be aware that basketball is an all-year-round operation and generates the majority of income from seasonal registrations, game day fees, clinics, sponsorships and events and tournaments. There are 240,000 registered participants who participate in weekly and country basketball and basketball across our state, 73,000 females and 167,000 males, it's the largest registered playing numbers of any sport in Victoria. And we represent, our participants come from all genders, all ages and all abilities. In regional Victoria, there's 52,500 approximately and just under 20,000 of that is our female participation database. The gross annual turnover generally of basketball in Victoria is in excess of $100 million and if we look at the intergenerational review of Australian sport that notes together, sport creates significant value for Australia with at least $7 returned on every dollar, that puts us just under the billion dollars of community and societal value from basketball. Greater Shepparton Basketball Association this time has also had to review all aspects of its operations to ensure sustainability and viability for an excess of 1,500 weekly participants and has had to make some very difficult decisions. It is vitally important that we all provide strong positive leadership and good communication this time and Greater Shepparton Basketball should be congratulated for their work. This submission, councillors from BBC together with the Greater Shepparton Basketball Association, we are seeking to council allocate funds in the 2020, 2021 budget to assist in the reactivation of basketball in Shepparton. The largest cost to basketball participation is utilization of costs and stadiums and we submit the Greater Shepparton City Council remove the court high costs for basketball in 21, 2020 and 2021. We're aware that a number of councils in Victoria have already agreed to waive the fees, including Hume City Council, Latrobe Council and Borbor Shire. And this is request is to directly assist the reactivation of our sport and the return to grassroots basketball. As I said, the challenge to our sport is the shortfall of revenue impacting the capacity to fund ongoing operational costs. Basketball is recognised as one of the highest team participation sports in Shepparton and in Victoria and together with Greater Shepparton Basketball Association, we are working with council and council's recreation staff to continually increase participation in our sport. One of the impediments is the large cost to hire those courts at the Shepparton Basketball Stadium and we are seeking your assistance in the, in the forthcoming budget to assist the association. to get our participants back onto our court as the cheapest possible cost. Estimated that we probably spend over $100,000 on their court hire annually, and that's what we're seeking from council tonight. I appreciate the time to be able to submit on behalf of Shepparton Basketball and Basketball Victoria Country.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
So the presenter can be removed from Zoom meeting now? Yeah, thank you. Next, we have Miss Williams, representing Cussum Park Advisory Committee.
Very much. Thanks for your time today.
Good evening, Miss Williams.
Good evening. Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. You are representing Cussum Park Advisory Committee.
Yes, that's correct.
Just to let you know that you have five minutes for your presentation and at four minutes I'll let you know. The bell will ring and I'll let you know. Councillors might seek any clarification with regards to your presentation. That's the simple format for today. Please stay.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Abdullah and councillors, and thank you for hearing my submission. I'm here this evening on behalf of the Cussum Park Advisory Committee. Cussum Park is a bushland-style park encompassing 33 hectares of wetlands, woodlands and open space on the northern outskirts of Tchira. The park is a valuable community asset for the township, providing educational opportunities, passive recreation and significant habitat for indigenous plants and animals. An iconic part of Cussum Park is the large rotunda that is used for public events and general day-to-day activities by park users. Picture one of the printettes that you should have shows a public event at the rotunda. These occur several times a year. More frequent is the use of the facility by community members and groups such as GV Connect for morning tea outings, mothers' groups, fitness groups, family gatherings and passing travellers as a wayside stop. A key part of the rotunda infrastructure is a retaining wall on the western side, as shown in the backgrounds of pictures two and three. The wall provides both amenity and aesthetics for park-to-park users. It provides a barrier to some of the traffic noise on the adjacent and busy Andera Road and also shelters from prevailing winds. The wall also provides an element of privacy, shielding users from passing traffic. The retaining wall was constructed by volunteers 25 years ago. Unfortunately, due to natural processes, the wall has deteriorated since its construction and was recently classified as failed during a council asset condition survey. This means it needs to be replaced or pulled down as soon as practical. In picture four, you can see a lane on some of the upright posts. The wall is currently fenced off to prevent people climbing on it as children regularly do. The council team responsible for management of Cussum Park have sought a quote for the replacement of the wall, and this is $12,000. The Cussum Park Advisory Committee are requesting that funds be made available in the next budget for the replacement of the wall. We note that Cussum Park has not received any capital funding since it was established 25 years ago. We believe the facility infrastructure should be maintained to retain its usability and for it to continue to provide an excellent outdoor facility for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time today.
No worries.
So if the presenter can be removed from the Zoom meeting? Thank you. All right. Next, we have Mr. Ian Twain and Miss Carrie Twain. I hope I pronounced their names correctly, but can you please bring them in the Zoom meeting?
It's two participants currently coming in, so I believe it might be.
Yes, yes, there are two.
Can you just bring them in the Zoom meeting?
Yes. So. Am I right to go, guys?
Yes, I'll be waiting for Carrie.
No, Carrie's, she's in the room. Yes.
So please start. Just to let you know that you have five minutes for this presentation and at four minutes a bell will ring. I'll let you know. Councillors may seek any clarification from you during the presentation. Please start.
Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening. I just note on page 43 of the planning in the budget, in the key initiatives, there was no mention of funding to resolve the land use in Investigation Area Two. There is reference to implementing the South East Precinct Structures Plan to ensure sufficient supply of residential land. In the 2007 Greater Shepparton Housing Strategy released in 2009, it was identified there was a shortage of land allocated for rural living within the Shepparton region. Again, in the 2019 Land Supply and Demand Five to Ten Years Document, it was identified Shepparton had the capacity for future residential division of some 10,000 lots for future with a range of 20 to 26 years' supply. Yet again, land available for rural living was in limited supply. Land within the Investigation Area Zone Two meets all of the six objectives that as stated in the 2050 Growth Plan. Landholders in this zone have spent considerable amounts of money preparing reports for council. We ourselves have spent in excess of $40,000, yet the council seems not to be prepared to allocate any funding to resolve this area. Two years ago, I went to the Beagashire on behalf of a client and in order to apply for a building and planning permit for a project in that shire. Two days later, I walked out with a building plan and, sorry, the planning permits and the building permits. I was amazed. When I asked how was this possible, the reply was, "Our CEO has requested we are to assist and process any application that will promote development and employment efficiently and as effectively as possible." For 15 years, we've been trying to get the land resolved in Investigation Area Two, clearly identified, is a desperate need and a shortage of land available for rural living. We need to sort of move further with forward with this. As mentioned with in Sally's submission, the council will recoup any expenditure in processing this. And I just urge the council to allocate some funding and finally get this Investigation Area Two resolved. And I'd be most grateful if you were able to follow through on that in a pretty efficient and timely manner. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, so.
Cameron Troy.
All right. Next is Mr. Cameron Troy, representing Golden Valley Hockey Association. Cameron is here. Good evening. You can hear us, Cameron?
I can.
That's good. All right. So you have five minutes for your presentation today. At four minutes a bell will ring. I'll let you know. Other than that, over to you. Councillors may seek any clarification about your presentation as we go along.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Seema, councillors and Peter, the opportunity to speak this evening. At the completion of the construction of the multi-purpose pitch at the sports precinct in late 2016, we were unfortunately left with a, what many regarded as an unfinished facility. Player dugouts, spectator shelter and a scoreboard were not provided, and the lighting was far inadequate for hockey. Apparently, funds were diverted at the time to other developments in the precinct. Portable player dugouts were provided in July 2019. While the multi-purpose pitch has been used at times by the association, by the GV Hockey Association, we have not been able to fully utilise it due to these shortcomings. The desire to address the need for improved lighting now is due to the recent announcement of us and council hosting the Junior State Championships next July, an event that will bring many families and more around the state for the week at various age levels. This event requires two pitches capable of hosting under 18 matches well into the evening. A letter of support from Hockey Victoria is included in the submission. Along with enabling a successful event next July, an adequate level of lighting on this pitch opens up a range of additional possibilities for the association, such as offering midweek competition, enticing new people to the sport that would otherwise be unable to play and participate due to involvement in other sports on the weekend. With the uncertainty of whether we can have a winter season this year, improved lighting on that facility will offer us the opportunity to significantly expand the twilight competition later this year. As the multi-purpose pitch is open for other groups and sports to book and use, upgraded lighting will make the facility much more attractive for those other groups to utilise. Acknowledging we are the primary user of the facility, the GV Hockey Association offers to contribute 20% of pre-GSD costs. We see now is the right time to upgrade this facility with the looming Junior State Championships next year, after which we will remain strongly placed to host major state and national hockey events well into the future. So yeah, thank you for the consideration of that submission.
Thank you. Thanks for your time today, Cameron. Thanks.
Thank you.
You can end this session at your end. Next, we have Mr. Carl Walters. Is he in the waiting room? Good. Can you bring them in? Hello, Carl. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Carl, you're representing Tchira Community Plan Committee, and you are here to make a presentation, just to let you know you have five minutes for this presentation and a bell will ring at four minutes. So over to you. Councillors may seek any clarification from you during your presentation. All right, then.
Okay. No worries. Thanks, Seema, and hello all. So just wanted to thank you for the opportunity and also well done on the draft budgets. Not easy putting something together of this scale, so well done. There's a number of great projects in there, funding, looking at works in Tchira already and which is fantastic from our perspective. So I've listed a couple of those in the submission. Couple in particular, I suppose, Douglas Street Car Park lighting that will allow us to have safe passage, especially at this time of year. Once it's upgraded, I think that'll be a great facility and support the RV parking pilot, which is an approved previously council meeting, so that's good. The one thing I want to highlight is, from our perspective, the walking track extension, the 248,000 for that in Tchira is very well received in the draft budget. And we've attached our draft, attached our master plan for walking tracks for your staff to action, I suppose, when that comes to fruition. And we're looking at the O'Reilly path, so that'll be an interesting con. And very well appreciated. So two items I wanted to raise, which aren't on the budget, and again, the old festering sore, I suppose, of Meteor Park Extension, it's been around for 15 years. And I understand there's been significant progress over the last little bit. What I would, from a community plan perspective, would be good if there would be a nominal fee, a nominal amount put in the 2020-21 budget to allow a little bit of progress on the Meteor Park Extension or redevelopment or some action or design or master plan review would be good. It just shows a little bit of confidence that it's moving forward and the community over here are, it's pretty hard to get people thinking positively about Meteor Park expansion when we haven't done it in that period of time. But anyway, so that would be one. The other one I wanted to highlight, which comes from Tchira Park and from, really from the football netball club, but the community as well. So Tchira Park has been a tier-three ground, which we've been paying rental on there for a number of years. Tier three requires lighting, I understand. So used Tchira Park as lighting, but the football and netball club and others own those lights. They pay for those lights. They pay the power for those lights and they also pay for maintenance those lights. So what, and they're not really up to speed with what the current standards should be. So what I would like is to ask for council to consider adding those to the draft budget, even the preliminary design of lighting for Tchira Park. So it actually can be council-owned lights and maintained and looked after. And we can legitimately move forward as a tier-three ground. It's a little bit confusing for the people who rent the ground about whether it's tier-three, does that require lights or not? And I think that would resolve it and would also allow us to have great lights and potentially have night games of some sort, whether it's cricket or football or even soccer. So those two things would be good, even if there was a nominal starting fee in 2021 for looking at 21, 22 or physical works, but they're just too, I'd like to put forward to be added to a budget somewhere. But apart from that, thanks for what's on the list. We're very appreciative of Tchira. But just a bit of cash coming on the eastern side of the river or western side of the river. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. Thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Bye. All right. So next is Mr. Ross Graham, representing Tourism Greater Shepparton. Do we have Ross in the waiting room?
There he is.
Welcome, Ross. You can hear us?
Yes, I can.
That's good. So you're here for your presentation or you're representing Tourism Greater Shepparton, and you have five minutes for this presentation. And I'll let you know at four minutes' time that you've got one minute left. Other than that, councillors might seek any clarification from you with regards to your presentation. But that's the format, so you go for your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mayor Seema and councillors and Peter. On behalf of Board of Tourism Greater Shepparton, we thank the Greater Shepparton City Council for the opportunity to respond to the draft budget as published on the Greater Shepparton website. The board have taken the time to review and have the following points for consideration in the review of the proposed budget prior to its adoption by council. In regard to COVID-19, the crisis has had a severe impact on many small businesses and individuals across the Golden Valley. It is understood that the budget process commenced and the draft budget was largely put in place prior to this crisis. It is important that council revisit the budget and make transparent adjustments and concessions where possible. It's unreasonable to include the standard 2% rate increase when Greater Shepparton visitor economy businesses are under the most significant financial pressure and they need to feel understood and supported. With the mass cancellations of major events and leading industry advice suggesting that large-scale events of any kind are likely to be at least 12 months away, we would like to request that the current events budget allocations be redeployed to smaller visitor economy, community livability, infrastructure projects such as trail connectivity between our smaller towns to Shepparton and surrounding regional centres, i.e. linking to the O'Keefe Trail to Bendigo and to the Murray region. Also, river access, public art programmes and interpretive signage and storytelling. Discussions with the Regional Partnership Board and local state government representation highlights the need to have detailed plans and designs in place for smaller projects so that when funding is made available by the state and federal government, we are in a position to access these funds. Currently, we do not have an overarching tracks and trail strategy or a public art strategy, so are not ready to go when the funds do become available. We'd also like to draw attention to the Local Government Guide for Engaging with Visitor Economy Produced in the Partnership by the Victorian Government and the Victorian Tourism Industry Council in 2018. While we acknowledge the new Local Council Government Act that will come into effect from the next council elections in October 2020, and the on-poor status of the regional review, the principles and characteristics of a functioning visitor economy remain unchanged. Page 10 of the document identifies and defines the role of each key stakeholder with local government playing a key role. However, it is the industry that creates the majority of jobs and is responsible for hosting visitors and meeting their individual needs. We highlight overall each level of government recognises the interconnectedness between the visitor experience and livability. A great place to live is a great place to visit and improving visitor amenities improves livability. The Tourism Research Project funded by council makes clear recommendations on the need for council and industry to work in partnership. This need was also identified as a key issue within the Economic Development, Tourism and Events Strategy for 2017-2021. While the Joint Council and Industry Tourism Working Group has made strides to create a more collaborative approach between While the Joint Council and Industry Tourism Working Group has made strides to create a more collaborative approach between council and the tourism industry, we are concerned at the CEOs and executives seeming refusal to progress the transparent review of governance required to address issues of duplication and brand confusion across Shepparton Show Me. Great things happen here, council tourism, council tourism events, council marketing, Tourism Greater Shepparton and the Shepparton Chamber of Commerce and Industry. Key priorities identified by TGS and the working group remain to resolve the ongoing governance issue and collaborate on the destination identity for our region. With the new SAM set to open early 2021 and over $300,000 being allocated for an opening party, there will be national and international attention. This is the perfect time to develop a standout destination brand regardless of
One minute left, Ross.
Regardless of which region the state government tells us we belong to. We also refer to our submission from previous budgets, and that is there, including the letter. But in closing, we continue to encourage council to support the attractive presentation of a vibrant and welcoming destination, support destination infrastructure, including parks and gardens, public toilets, shared pathways and cultural assets, proactively engage with Tourism Greater Shepparton as the peak local tourism body in order to inform planning and decision-making, commit to a planned and timely approach to a destination development, events, attractions and marketing in partnership with local communities and industry to develop, deliver and review results, and seek to partner with industry in the development of dedicated township-based destination accident plans, and finally, commit to a full and transparent review of the governance and oversight of destination development and marketing for Greater Shepparton with the aim of developing an accountable, sustainable and productive regional and local tourism framework endorsed by the industry.
Okay, your five minutes are over.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to our last presenter, Miss Michelle Salzby. She is representing Shepparton Family and Financial Services. Hello, Michelle. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. How are you?
Yeah, we are good, thank you. So five minutes for your presentation today, and a bell will ring at four minutes. I'll let you know. You have been given five minutes for your presentation, and I'll let you know at four minutes that you've got one minute left. Councillors might seek any clarification about your presentation, but yeah, it's, so that's your five minutes. Are you ready to go? That's good.
Okay, so we're fairly new to Shepparton. We come across from Bendigo to recreate what was in Bendigo and Shepparton. I'll just give you some stats just to bore you senseless. Since the start of the year, we've got 1,571 families on our clientele list. Two hundred and thirty-five of those families are indigenous. We're actually supporting 6,500 children to date in the Greater Shepparton community. Forty-eight percent of our clients are between twenty and thirty-nine, forty-two percent between forty and sixty-four. Fifty-six percent of them are women. What we've noticed in the last few weeks is that we're getting a lot of older clients coming through that are really, really struggling. We're very fortunate to do deliveries into the community to the vulnerable, so we send them out once a fortnight, a pack, try and keep them going through. We've got, we've been very fortunate to acquire new fridges and frisers, and right now it appears to be holding. We're not getting more excessively, we're not getting less, but we're really having a lot of people come through that are not Australian citizens, so the backpackers, the people that are here on work permits that are completely reliant on our service because there's no other avenue of any income for them. I think going forward, I love Shepparton. I live in Shepparton. I think going forward, we're really in a struggle to see Jobkeeper and Jobstarter in. I think a lot of the low-income earners spend what they've got and perhaps overspend. I think we're in a really struggle to see financial capacity, having that loss of income. I see our our clientele exploding. We work with all sectors of the community, and we're very fortunate that we don't have, you can only be a DV or a homeless. We work with the whole spectrum and we work with the whole of the community services. My concern going forward is homelessness. We're seeing domestic violence, which it might be happening now, but that's a three-year process for people to get out of that mental compact of domestic violence. Mental health. Being isolated for people who have mental health is detrimental. Now, the problem is that you can say, okay, we'll get out of this coronavirus in the next six months. This is an ongoing issue that's going to last for a very long time for those people to be able to get up and recoup and recreate what they had before. So they're my, they're my key my key concerns. My key concerns are capacity workers, so not financial councillors, because they're great. They do a fabulous job. But getting that short-term capacity worker to help deal with the smaller issues, get people back on their feet. We're very lucky. We're very lucky. We've had our doors open the whole time with social distancing. Oh, man, we spray everything.
Michelle, you have one minute left.
That's fine, but to look someone in the eye and say, hey, it's going to be okay, and we're going to get through this together. That's been key for us. I bet you did.
Michelle, is that the end of your presentation?
That's it.
Okay.
Mayor, councillor, Mayor Druitt, can I please, Michelle, what are you actually asking for? You've come along with your submission. What is it council can do for you?
We're asking for a little bit more funding.
Okay.
So a little bit more funding.
Yeah.
To try and get us through the next portion of what Shepparton's facing.
And how much is that, Michelle, that you're asking for from the budget?
I think it's twenty percent of what we've got and a $10,000 one-off just to help us boost what we're doing.
Just to clarify that, twenty percent of what you've got, are you saying, and what would that, what would that amount be?
Thirty thousand.
Oh, sorry. Did you say thirty percent?
Thirty.
Okay, and a $10,000 one-off. That's yours. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time today, Michelle. Thank you. I think that's the end of this session. For you?
Thank you.
You can, thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Okay. So with Michelle being the last presenter, we'll now go back to page number two of our agenda, and there's a recommendation. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Yeah, councillor, okay. What's your, what's the motion? You're on mute. Could you unmute yourself?
Sorry about that. I'd like to make it the standing orders be resumed.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Oris Varey?
I'll second the recommendation, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. Moving on to next recommendation, there's a recommendation on page two. Would a councillor like to move a motion? Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move a motion that the council receive a note to submissions in response to the public advertisement of the draft budget 2020-2021. And point two, acknowledge the verbal presentations which have been made in support of these submissions. And point three, formally consider all received submissions and the adoption of the 2020-2021 budget at the council meeting to be held on Tuesday, 16th of June, 2020 at 5:30pm.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councillor Jovanati, thank you. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just briefly, I'd like to thank all the presenters tonight here. It's interesting to hear the different issues that concern the varied members of our community. I just want to make a promise for myself, and I think on behalf of all councillors, I will certainly consider all those recommendations that have been made tonight and all those submissions. It's a tough year, we all understand that, and I think all the submitters also understand it's a tough year to formalise any sort of budget, but we'll certainly give it great consideration.
Thank you, Councillor Adam. Councillor Jovanati, would you like to speak to the motion?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Adams covered it very well.
Thank you. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak for the motion? Okay, we'll now go to the vote. Those in favour? Motion carried unopposed. Thank you. With this, I now declare this meeting closed at 6:30pm. Thank you very much.